Week and. Okay, so one second.
I'm gonna go to the calendar.
So, I heard Scott. Alright, so we're gonna get started with the Board of Selectmen special budget workshop meeting. For Monday, February twenty seventh, we're gonna get started at. Seven thirteen, we had a little bit of technical difficulty. We're gonna start with. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and we're gonna move to item two, public speak, Elaine Buchard.
Hi, I just wanted to listen to see where you're at in the budget process at this point, and of course. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're pushing for a part-time planning economic development consultant. Or part-time employee, so that's what I'm listening for. Thanks.
You got it. Joanne Ebert.
Well said, thank you. Just listening.
Alright. Eric, um, after our last meeting, we had asked for certain. Guidance from you, so if, do you wanna sit there and take control of the meeting and put up the data that you wanna put up for us?
Uh, sure. What do you want to start with?
Well, are, are we gonna push all of the public works, roadwork off till Jay can be on?
Yeah, we're gonna have to. I mean, we just haven't had time to, that's gonna, that's gonna be an expense extensive. You know, put a full-blown plan back together for you guys. That's gonna take us a bit of time.
Okay. I cannot move that. Do you have your, can you put up on your screen your budget spreadsheet?
Certainly. Okay, that should be the budget spreadsheet.
Okay.
So what would you like to look at? Do you wanna just go down through it line by line, or what do you want?
Let's go through it, section by section if we can.
Okay, we'll start at the top. Let me just. Okay, so, uh.
First up, we talked about your budgets, budget revenue shortfalls, we did talk about that.
Right. So, you know, unfortunately, a lot of this, we just don't know yet. I mean, because we're still at a preliminary, the state budget hasn't come out yet, so we're just making guesses on a bunch of this stuff. So, the bottom line is, if this is. You know, accurate, we're looking at somewhere around two point four million, uh, two point four, two million. In revenues from things other than taxation. Um, when we get to expenses, as we all know, the two biggest single-line items. Are education at the Ram Board of Ed, and then education at the Andover Elementary School. I did notice that the elementary school Board of Ed did publish a draft budget. Um, that was four point two, three, four million. So it was just basically just about a thousand dollars less than the initial estimate. Uh, that I had, so I put that in the, the exact number from that. There is still a, Ram hasn't come out with any kind of finalized budget yet. But my casual conversation with Colin, the superintendent, indicates that. We can expect it to drop at least a percent, maybe a percent and a half, uh, from what's listed there. You know, but there's nothing final because they haven't made any kind of final decision yet at this point. Okay. Uh. Administrator's contract, my contract is signed, so that's just what the number is. Um, my admin assistant, you know, you, we still haven't, as a town. Or as a board, set the pay raises for the non-union, non-contract employees. So I used three percent as an estimate for all of that, but obviously that depends on. What the board wants to do, whether you wanna go lower or higher.
Alright, so let, let's, uh, put off until we can sit there and have everybody. Having a conversation about non-union employee pay rates, so. Send us, what I would ask you to do is send us all an email on the individuals that qualify for that, so. I'm assuming we have Jay, we have the administrative assistant. I don't think we have very many others, do we?
Uh, well.
We actually do, because you gotta sit there and go, there are some other people that are non-union that. What is the, what is the increase we plan on giving, so we have to come up with a number related to that.
Right.
Are we, are we look, are we looking for one number, or are we adjusting based on, you know, time on job and such and such as well?
Um, we can do it any way we, we choose to do, I mean, that. You know, it's a question of what your percentage is gonna be, Adrian, so, or, or we give each individual an evaluation, or we ask Eric. To give us what those numbers are, and then we decide whether we go with Eric's numbers or not.
Right, and so you had two spreadsheets that were given to you when the original budget was drafted. Uh, the first was called Town Personnel Costs, Healthcare and Benefits V four. Um, and the second was. Uh, Town Personnel Costs, how did I word that? Something wacky. Healthcare and, no. Non-contracted personnel raises. That is the one that shows the various, uh, scenarios. Um, for employees and what it looks like. Um, I could share that screen now if you wanted to look at that, or we can review that at some other time.
Uh, I would personally like to sit there and work on that at a different meeting.
Okay.
I mean, if you could go through the. The non-employee cost. Items and sit there and tell us if you have any significant increases or decreases in any of the line items, then that would be things that we should, we should talk about. And we should get to, I mean, it doesn't look to be very many transact, or changes that you're making that are. Are of substance, and then what we have to do is get back everybody and decide, are, is there any? Do we have any areas where anybody has any? Desire to make changes, like, uh. What are our priorities? Are there priorities that individual members of the board have, and do we wanna sit there and act upon them? So.
Right. So if we start talking about that, and we, we scroll right down, under the tax collector's line item. We are assuming that the tax collector is retiring at some point in the fall. So we are going to, we put in extra money in the conference seminar line item. Because I know my admin assistant is interested in. Possibly becoming the tax collector, and that might be something that works for the town, that. No decision certainly has been made on that yet, but that would, uh. You know, cover the first of the, uh. The course series that you have to get to be certified as a tax collector. Now, you don't have to be certified the day you start the job, but you do have to attain certification in a reasonable time, so that allows that. That's the line item you see up there under conference slash seminars. You know, that's the only big real increase under the tax collector budget. Um, in the assessors line item, there's a bump up for training, there's also a couple thousand dollars in contract software maintenance. Those are the contracts that we have for both QDS and Vision. And they gave us finally numbers for that, so those are based on the contracts. Uh, what those companies would charge us in the next year. Um, the other one that went up a lot was the subscription to JD, to the NADA books. Which we are required to have and maintain. Um, you know, the company got bought out, and they jacked up the, uh, the rates.
Isn't there going to be a change to how? The state is dealing with automotive assessments, isn't that?
Maybe. Maybe, yes, there is one thing that might come into effect this year. Um, although, as I understand it, they're talking about a legislative change, not have it come into this year. Because the, uh. Companies that do the, the tax software aren't ready for it yet. And so they're arguing they can't actually deal with it yet, um, which. You know, I don't wanna argue one way or the other, I don't know where that's going. Um, so that's out there. Maybe we don't need it. Um, you know, if, if the change really does go into effect next year. We're not gonna need to buy the books, but if we do have to buy the books, they're a lot more expensive going forward.
That's fine.
The registrar's office and elections are both kind of sketchy to estimate right now. Um, registrar less so than the elections. Because we still don't have any idea what's gonna pass in terms of early election. Uh, results, there's a bunch of different bills, I've read through them all. Um, the, the worst one for us would require us to staff the polling place for two weeks straight prior to the election. That would be a very expensive thing if the town has to do it. Um, the least costly one to us would just do it all via, uh, you know, mail-in ballot, that would be essentially cost neutral. So, we put in some increases for both registrar and elections. But without actually really knowing what that's gonna be, that number is really variable right now. Um, but this represents a. You know, a slight increase, but something that doesn't radically change the way we have to hold elections. Um, so that's, you know, the elections category. Uh, in the building department, that the shared service for the building official. Assumes a three percent increase and an increase for one additional hour. Um, that was a request from Bolton. Um, depending on what you wanna do, we could push back on that. Um, you know, it just depends where you wanna go with that. I don't know whether they would. You know, I know they're desperately trying to hire another, uh, building official right now, and the reason is Jim Rooker. Who was their essentially chief building official, took over as the town administrator. So now they just have Randy, and they have a couple part-time people helping cover right now. So they're, they're looking to hire another full-time employee for that. Um, that's that.
I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't push back, I think we're getting a pretty good deal out of them right now, so. You know, I'm happy they're working with us, so.
I agree, and I actually think what they're giving us is really good service. Um, you know, and I, I think it's worth it, but, you know, but it is a significant increase. You know, I'm not, not trying to say it's not. Um. The admin assistant, we actually had. Uh, more money. You know. It's a union position, we don't have it fully, we don't know what's gonna come out of the union. But that's a, that's, if nothing else changes, that would cover, uh, what. You know, if what we're proposing with the union goes, that will cover it. Um, that's pretty much it for the building department, other than you see I did put the town planner line item there. Um, we did elect to put the wages for both the zoning agent. And the inland wetlands and water course agent in that, uh, under the building department. Because a while back, you would ask me what our costs were for the building department as a whole. You know, so I thought it would be, be smart with who the majority of the costs within the building department and put it all in that one department. As opposed to the way it's been in the past was. The zoning agent was under the Planning and Zoning Commission. But he's not really a part of the, the commission, he's an employee of the town that works. Essentially in the building and land use office, so that's how I did it conceptually. Um, if you guys are unhappy with that, we can certainly change that back.
No, I like it there. I mean, at least my opinion is that's appropriate spot for it, I mean, because I would ask you, what is the? What is the revenue generated by the building department? Does it cover that one thirty-five right now? Let's sit there and take out thirty thousand, does it cover a hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, no.
No.
Definitely not right now, but part of that is building is off now. Um, but, yeah, we can, you know, we can certainly going forward revisit fees. You know, it's definitely harder to cover the costs of the zoning agent and. The, the wetlands agent than it is to cover the costs of the building department. Um, but. You know, of the building official, I should say, in the admin system.
Yeah, we, we probably, we, we probably should be reviewing fees again. I mean, this is something we should kinda, so. Um, I'll be happy to work on that with you again, Eric, if you wanna do that again.
Yep, not, uh, not a problem, um. Library payroll, I've gotta review that, that doesn't seem quite right. Um, we do, because most of the library employees, uh, are. Making less than what will be the current, what will be the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage on July one. A lot of those employees are brought up to the fifteen dollar an hour to comply with state law. Um, I asked the library for a list of the number of hours approximately by each of their employees. Um, and when I multiplied it through by their costs, that's what I get, seventy-nine four, so that's what I budgeted. Uh.
They didn't submit, but they, I thought the libraries normally submits a budget, no?
So they submit an operations budget. But because their employees get paid directly by the town. Um, they just, in, in because they do not set their own salaries. Um, you as a board set all their salaries, there's no real way for them to submit a payroll budget. Um, so what I asked them to do is basically. You know, by employee, how many hours do they anticipate working in a year, and then I do the math.
But, okay, so, but, alright, that, that was the question, so they're telling you how many hours they need or whatever, you're doing.
But you have to get them up to the minimum wage.
Yes, correct.
So get them up to the minimum wage and then give us the number.
Yes, that should be the number. So. If you looked at. Can you see that screen, or are you still on the other screen?
Still on the other screen.
Okay.
So anyway, if, if that is the number with their, their wages at minimum wage, then. That's the baseline.
That is correct. Yes, that's what it calculates out at, based on the number of hours per week that they've given me per employee. And I can show you that screen if you wanna see that screen instead.
No, we don't wanna, I don't wanna put that up, individual information. Um, I just wanna know that if you're calculating that out and that. I mean, I don't know how the library, I don't know why the library wouldn't do a full-blown. I mean, they should at least sit there and say, this is what we'd like to get our employees to be paid. And here are the hours, the estimated hours, we anticipate them working, and give us a budget that we can go through, I mean. Because I guess I would ask you, Eric, go back to the library board and say, is this the number that works for wages? Anyway, okay, let's go through that, let's get through that one, the next one, you're in control.
Okay, uh, civil preparedness, that's not changing very much, I think that's a three percent increase in salary. Everything else basically stays the same. Um. You know, it's, it's not a particularly big budget. So town office building worked pretty well, flatline. There are a bunch of things that I don't have hard numbers yet for that I asked for. Like, I asked for, you know, what their expectations are for the computer tech support, again, assuming the same. Rough numbers that we have right now. Um, you know, I don't have the numbers yet for the payroll service, so a lot of this stuff. You know, I, I don't know specifically, I mean, some of the bigger ones like. Talent Dispatch, I know that number now, um, you know, a lot of the others, you know, were just based in, and we know. As far as electricity, our guests should be fairly good. Um, the, one of the unknowns is the fuel oil, because we are still forecasting a changeover to a ductless split. Um, and that will knock the fuel oil down pretty considerably. Um, I kinda split the difference between what we had and what we're, we're proposed. Assuming that we can, you know, we don't end up changing out the boiler. But we end up putting in the ductless splits, and, you know, we, we generate a significant fraction of our heating load with the ductless splits.
Did you make an adjustment to the electric bill accordingly?
Uh, yes, so we guessed really high for the electric bill for last year. So I did bump that up somewhat. Um, you know, and I'm also assuming that when we get past the six-month bump. Our costs per kilowatt is gonna drop back down considerably, because. You know, I just, I don't see that rate being staying really high. Um, you know, we're not as affected anyway, because we're locked in with Constellation. Constellation has gone a little bit, but it looks like it's gonna come back down again also.
What are we locked in at?
You had to ask. Um, I don't know off the top of my head what we're paying for, you know, our, uh, supply.
I was gonna say, like, I, I just locked in at thirteen, you know? I mean, so if we, if we're not stuck in a contract, we should be looking a little bit, you know?
Yeah, no, the, the way it works is we pay, uh. I think it's, I think we do it through CCM, we pay CCM, who has a contract. Goes out to contract every two years with a company that. Essentially looks at all the electric suppliers in New England. And negotiates for all of the, the CCM member towns that wanna participate. Um, so we've had that arrangement with Constellation for a bunch of years, and it, it is a pretty good rate. Um, I don't know exactly what it is today, um, but it's, it's certainly a lot less hassle. And you have somebody that's paid to monitor that, um, and put the RFPs out to, to keep your costs as low as possible.
Okay.
Um. You know, computer replacement services, we've kept most of that the same, um. You know, we did bump up janitorial supplies, because just looking at the bills that Willie's submitting. Um, you know, I, I think we're sixteen hundred was a little low for the maintenance for this building. Um, computer repair service, we've been doing fairly well, because. At this point, we've done a pretty good job of updating all the PCs here, so this is just what it takes for us to maintain. Um, which nets us essentially three computers per year, uh, across the departments. Um, and that does not include the town clerk's office, because they don't play well with us. Um, legal advertising, no change, insurance. So I, uh, we must have overestimated it a little bit last year. Because when I do the math this year, I keep coming out with, I, I don't have a set of bills yet for Kerma. Um, we're not gonna get them for a couple of, of months still. But with Kerma, we have a cost cap. For both of the liability and automobile policy and the workers' comp policy. So even if we assume the max increase they could possibly give us this year. Um, and assume a five percent increase for ESIP, it only comes out to about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Um, so, I don't know where we got last year's figure, to be perfectly honest. Um, I've put a note to myself that I wanna revisit that to make sure that there's nothing that I'm missing. But that covers our major insurance costs. Uh, employee benefits, looks like as far as the health and dental. We're looking overall at about a three percent increase this year in total healthcare costs. Um, if you remember last year, uh, it was basically zero. Um, so, um, that means, you know, over the last two years, it's been either, you know, three percent or zero. So overall, I think they're doing fairly well with the, uh, healthcare, healthcare costs. I know we had looked, and some people, you know, had thought we should consider getting out of the consortium and going to the state program that's run for the municipalities. But that program the last year or so has had some, uh, really bad claims history. Um, so I think that's probably not a great idea, because that looks like the cost for that program are going up this year fairly considerably.
Have we received any kind of refund related to the consortium?
What do you mean refund?
Well, you're basically in a self-insurance pool, has there been any savings that they've contributed back to the participating groups?
Not to the groups, but they've used that to fund the, essentially the pool. So, um, and they just, essentially what they do is they adjust the following year's rates. Based on what they need to do to keep the pool at a certain amount. So we haven't got any rebates per set.
How long have we been participating in this now? Is this year four? Year five?
Somewhere in there, yeah.
I mean, because they said when they started this, that after year three, there would be rebates back to the participants, so. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but then people got sick, so.
Yeah, but, you know, depends upon how sick Adrian, right, and, and did we get lucky or did we not? I mean, that, that's, so, anyway. It's a, it's a question that should be asked, like, are there, are there any plans for rebates? Because it's self-insurance. Okay.
Right, okay, um, old town hall. Old town hall, not a real lot of difference, other than I zeroed out the fuel oil bill completely because. They never seem to operate it or run the damn thing in the winter, and there's a full tank now. So I don't see any reason why we have to account for fuel for that for next year. Um. Town garage. Increase the conference and seminars. Um. I think there's a lot of training through the T two center at UConn that I would like. To start cycling their employees through. Um. You know, it's just a question of time. Uh, and do you wanna carve it out? Not a huge expense, but it's something I think we should. Uh. You know, should consider. Um. Yeah, nothing real earth shaking in, in that budget. Um, there is an increase in fuel, but we did that based on actual usage. So even though our cost. Per gallon of fuel has increased about a buck. Um. You know. Based on the last couple of years, three years of data. You know, we think seventy-five hundred should cover it. Um, so that's that old firehouse. You know, the only thing I'm really doing is I'm keeping electricity on until such point as we demolish the building. Uh, because I think, you know, all the, all the asbestos abatement contractors. Basically said if there's no building power source provided. Um, and there's no water provided, your costs to demo are considerably higher. So hopefully, within the next year, we get that building torn down, we essentially zero that out. Uh, completely for the old firehouse.
Eric, has that been winterized?
Um, yes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure everything's been drained down.
Yeah. Yep, power's off. Um, so that's been drained down for a couple of years.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yep. Um, I think, I, I don't have any numbers yet on the auditor. I'm assuming we can get away without really spending much more on their audit. Because I think we're gonna be giving it to him in a condition. That is going to make their lives enough happier that they're not gonna charge us more money than they're charging now. That's my goal anyway. So as far as the town's attorney budget, I think the legal retainer. You know, still works for the town's attorney. Um. You know, and providing some legal advice from other venues. The other venue being the town's personnel attorney. Um. You know, as you know, the, the, there's a separate legal budget for the assessor's office and. I propose keeping that at three thousand dollars. I don't know of anything right now that's gonna require us to expend. Money out of that, but. You know. Uh. So that hasn't really changed. Town engineering fees. I'm keeping it the same. We, up to this point, we haven't been expending money out of the budget. But I think now that we're using the town engineer a lot more. That's gonna become questionable. But I also think that a lot of things we're gonna chart are gonna be charged to the appropriate category. Like all the work he's doing for the culverts that gets charged against the culvert account. Not against just the town engineer. Uh, so this covers like general fees for the town engineer. So I kept that the same. Um. Crog CCM costs. I have the thing for cost already. Uh, I don't have it for CCM or Crog. Those budget meetings have not occurred yet. So I don't know what the final. Um. You know, but those have been holding pretty similar the past few years. So, um. I'm assuming they're gonna stay roughly the same as what they are now. When you get down to public works. The, the uh, salary line item. Um, you can see the assumptions there, which is. That we end up around three percent or two point nine percent of the union contracts in twenty-three. And uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. And a five percent increase for uh. Jay Tuttle. As far as the temp salary goes. Um, Jay put this in there because he. Uh, had a conversation with Scott Person. And Scott Person was trying to figure out whether we could get somebody in there specifically to cover. The field maintenance. Portion. And bring on a temp. Person for the summer to deal with, uh. Um. You know, dealing with the irrigation system in there. I'm not sure that's appropriate. I mean, we need to keep about twenty-five hundred dollars in that, that budget. To deal with when we uh, hire outside people for traffic control. But to me, I would, I would keep it at that. Um, so.
I mean, is, is that, is that an appropriate place to put it? Shouldn't that be under rec or something like that?
Well. I don't know where to put that. Um. You know, I'm not sure I would put it in there, period. Um, but I understand that Scott's frustrated. With the amount of work he's ended up doing. Dealing with the field. Um, you know, and that, that's perfectly valid. I just don't know exactly how to address that concern. Um, I don't think necessarily hiring a temp employee to do that. Is the way to go, but, but I don't know. Um. You know, I was hoping he was on the call to. To be part of that discussion. I think that you should kind of punt until you can get Scott to, to tell you.
He's on the call. He got on.
Okay. I guess I don't see you on there. Am I missing it?
Uh, he's there. I don't know if he's muted or not.
Scott, can you chime in?
I mean, I sit there with Scott and I go, why wouldn't we want public works or some version of public works, whether it's a temp individual or someone from? You know, you're gonna sit there, everybody's gonna sit there and go, we need them to do the work that's important, which is the roads and the culverts and the drainage and, but. That. That work down there should be done by someone supervised by Jay Tuttle.
But what work exactly?
Any work, any work related to that irrigation system should be, should be, if, if needed.
That's, that's. That's not public work, though.
Why not? I mean, we don't have a, we don't have a uh. Parks and Rec department, so why wouldn't you?
Oh, way over their pay grade. No, or should they under their, are, are under their pay grade, I should say, I apologize.
Well, so then the only one who's an employee in the town that would be under their pay grade to manage that would be Eric, so it's either Eric or Jay. We don't have a lot of options.
Or you hire it out. What, I mean, we need an idea of exactly what we're supposed to be doing down there that we're not doing. Making that list and let's, let's put that off the contract. You know?
Okay, the Scott is the one who definitely needs to. He know, he's doing it all. God's an angel.
He's, uh, he's on the call, but he, he's having a hard time with the audio, so I don't think he can. Chime in right now, so.
All right, he'll chime in the next, but let's keep going. We'll put that one on the list, Eric, of things we gotta circle back to. I mean, it really haven't changed very much, if anything.
No, there's not a lot that really needed changing. Um. You know, we're up a little bit in fire extinguisher testing. You know, part of that is going up because we've got more we need to replace next year, so that covers both testing and annual replacement. Um, diesel is up significantly. But that's just a straight. We're forecasting roughly the same total diesel usage by public works. Um, but we are paying more for it. Um. Gasoline. We're forecasting, you know, somewhat more use than we had. Uh, accounted for last year. Um, that's really the difference in that. Um, you know, again, who, who really knows what? You know, gas costs are gonna be, um. You know, so. Those are the two areas there. Again, that's a really variable. Um, as far as. Snow removal goes. You know, we had dropped the budget number down for overtime snow removal. Um, in half, a couple of years ago. Um, down to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, we certainly made that last year. You know, because it was a Maya, you know, we were about right last year.
Adrian.
Gonna be under this.
Mute your phone for a bit.
No, it's not Adrian. I think it might be Scott calling. And now he's echoing through his computer. There we go.
I was gonna say, I, I was muted.
Okay, I just muted him. Sorry, Scott, if you were trying to talk. I moved you into your phone though, so. But not your other computer, so hopefully you can still uh, chime in. Um, so that was Jay's, Jay Phil. Twenty-one, five was a more. Realistic number for that. For an average year. So. So that's what he put in his budget. Um, salts. You know, we don't have a salt contract lined up yet for next year. You know, as most of you know, when they took the pier. For the wind energy plant in New London. They took away the pier where all the salt came in and it was stored. Pretty much in the state. So now we've narrowed it down from basically four suppliers that there were before to two suppliers. But two suppliers that both end up using the same depot. So we're not getting, you know, the salt costs have gone up. Pretty considerably. Um, but. You know, depending based on our usage. It looks like we can probably get away with, you know, around sixty-six thousand in average. Um, and part of that is because. We've gone from using all treated salt. To now we use. You know, untreated salt in the warmer parts of the winter and just reserve the treated salt for the coldest portions of the winter. So that reflects a little bit of those savings also. Uh, transfer station wages. You know, our fees in this schedule are set by contract. Our usage has really held steady for about. You know, a year and a half or two years since we got out of the worst of the COVID portion. So we're basically flatlining. Uh, the budget other than the increased fees we're seeing that are passed on by the seller. But remember, in about a year. We're gonna be up for contract renewal. And it looks like those numbers for tipping fees and bulky waste. And hauling fees are gonna go up a lot. Um, a lot being, you know. Up to twenty-five percent. Um, cuz right now we're under a hundred dollars a ton. For all those, you know, for, for those fees. And it's looking like we're gonna end up somewhere, most of the contracts are signing now are. Are a hundred and twenty-five a ton or greater. So it's not gonna affect us this year, but it will affect us down the road. Um, and that's gonna be a big, big fee. Um. So the recycling, I haven't put in all the contracts. The first number for hazardous waste. That we know pretty well cuz that budget was approved at the mid near rock meeting. Um, I still have to go through the contracts. We have the new contracts for any freeze oil tire. Um, and go through and put those in, so I have not done that yet. Um, but my estimates are close. So it's not gonna be much different than the numbers that are there. Um, ground care, honestly, I don't have firm numbers for. You know, most of that yet. I did put a note into Craig for an estimate for what next year would be for the mowing. Um, I have the budget for beautification. Um, and I need to add in the, the money for, uh. Uh, also the, the maintenance of. Uh, what do you call the uh? The monument area. So. Again. I built in some increase in that. I'm hoping it's not more than, than what it is. Um, street lighting, that's just straight off the ever-source bill, so that's assuming that ever-source charges us what they've been charging us. Unlike the rest of our bills. Um, for electricity where, where the supply comes through Constellation. For the street lighting that comes straight through ever-source, so we can't use a third-party supplier for that. So, which is why you see a pretty big increase year over year in that. That reflects ever-source's rate increase in supply. Uh, custodian, you know, that's wage. Uh, based on, on what we. Uh, what we end up with uh, for employees. The resident state trooper contract, if you remember last year. You know, we guessed way over based on the, what information we got from the state on how to estimate it. We have the same trooper. Uh, there's nothing else that's really changed. So I took what we, our actual expenses for him last year. And, you know, I increased that a little bit and used that for a number, hoping that that's more realistic. Because unfortunately, they don't. Release. What they charge you for the indirects. Um, until the year's over anyway, so. You know, I think one forty should probably cover it, but. You know. Uh, that's an expense I have very little way to, to accurately forecast.
You might wanna check in, Eric, you might wanna check and see what step he's at. Cuz there was a fairly big increase in like the first five steps, I think it was almost twenty-five percent, so.
Really? Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I was, they, they had a retention issue, so they. The new contract that was just agreed to. Um, was, was substantial, it's twenty-five percent on the low steps. And it, it kinda brought everybody's up, but. Um, it was really substantial on the lower end, so. We want to check and see. He, he, he may be able to tell you, give you some guidance.
Well, so. So I asked him, which is what we do every year, is we ask the resident state trooper to run it up the chain and give us the cost of breakout. Um, I've asked him that, I just haven't gotten it yet. So, yeah, maybe I'm, maybe I'm totally off on that, you know, and that's way back up again. That's one of those frustrating things when I look at. What we forecast versus what we get charged. There's really very little correlation year to year. Um, we've guessed under by, you know, twenty-five thousand. Um, and, you know, last year we guessed over by, you know, we budgeted a hundred and seventy and got charged one twenty-eight. So. You know.
Yeah, that, that's my concern is I think he's on some of the lower end of the steps, so. It may be more, you know, at least his base. Just take his base salary and add twenty-five percent. So.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Scott wanted to share that. He called Christine Randanz, Randazzo for a number for the uh, Veterans Park, the turf maintenance. And he's just waiting to hear back from her about that.
Um. Okay. Yep. I did leave her message the other day. I've not spoken to, to Christine though. Um, I think she's done a really good job with that, the, the crabgrass elimination there. Um, and the fertilization program and meat eradication seems to work pretty well. I mean, it's, it's looking pretty good overall. So, uh, I would like to continue along that same thing. Um, then continue to use her for that. Uh, fire department budget, their overall budget was up around three percent. Um, I do have, they did give me a breakdown budget, I can send that to the board. Um, if you want to review their budget.
We can review it, but we don't have any favor, the report to the Board of Finance.
Well, that's why I haven't sent it to you so far. Um, but if you wanna see it, I can certainly send it to you. Um, I had a conversation with uh NCOG about where they were going. Um, they have not uh finalized a budget yet. This reflects. Uh, the number, part of the increase of this reflects. A change in the number of residents that we have. That has gone up slightly based, I forget what formula they're using, what state uh. Uh, database they use for determining population of each of their members towns. But that has that has increased, uh it increased here, and that also affected the cost that we pay for A H M. Um, cause both of those, the the twenty-twenty-one population census numbers for Andover are up. But they do not have a final budget yet, so again, this is a preliminary number. Um, fire marshal, the only thing he really asked that was significant in that. Was uh an increase in the training budget. You know, and he's he basically said the subscription number can come down pretty considerably. Because, you know, the descriptions we they split the cost between the county and over in the town of Bolton. Or correction Columbia anyway. Uh, so that's that budget. Senior citizen, the first one is the contract for Roberta. The rest of the numbers come directly from the senior program. So they're basically forecasting similar. Um, we are forecasting an increase in salary for the. Uh, you know, for the usage to go up for the drivers somewhat. Um, and and that obviously would be somewhat dependent on, you know. Their drivers would be affected by whatever we you put in also. Um, I also put in under three-three-nine, a, you know, a. Guess for vehicle purchase cost. Um, if we're gonna do it under that budget, I know you had as a board, going back and forth whether you're gonna try to fund it in this year's budget. Or funded as a budget item. Um, the number for Eastern Highlands Health District. That number is pretty solid, that came out of the budget. Um. You know, so we're, you know. That number for us is is actually a slight decrease. Um, amplifies a pretty small number, they ask for roughly the same every year. Um, it's not a big uh number. Um, access is the access agency, we haven't gotten official. Request yet, but they typically ask for about four hundred dollars a year for the town. They are, they function as our social services agency. Um, they're mostly state funded. Um, A H M Services. Uh, the note there is wrong, we finally had the meeting last week. Um, I believe I sent to both you and the Board of Finance their uh budget. Um, to review. Um, they're proposing going up around five thousand dollars, little less than five thousand dollars in. In costs to Andover. Uh, for that program. Have any of you reviewed that information? The A H M budget stuff?
Yeah, you sent it over like over a week ago.
Yep. Does anybody have any issues or questions with that? Because. The the A H M. The budget adoption, there's two votes, there's one cast on behalf of the Board of Selectmen of each town. And one cast on the behalf of the Board of Finance. Uh, you appointed me to be that rep a few years back. So, but I don't cast that 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 vote for the budget. Until you all have had a chance to review it and weigh in on it. Um, if you are satisfied with it. Um, I will cast the vote the that at the next meeting. Uh, on behalf of the board, but again, that's up to you.
When's the next meeting?
Uh, it has not been set yet. Um, I'm suspecting the Board of Finance wants to weigh in. Uh, cause they didn't have very long to review it before their last meeting, so I think you got probably three more weeks. Before you'd absolutely have to make a decision.
I mean, honestly, Jeff, you look at the numbers, they they're really, they're very conservative over there, we shouldn't have any complaints.
Okay.
I mean, the the thing that that I'm always encouraged by them is that. You know, our. Uh. Our percentage. Of the total bill went up a little bit because they have a levy formula just like RAM. But it's composed of two things, it's composed of, one part is the town populations. And then the second part is the school age population, it's kind of a blended average. So their budget overall went up about, I wanna say three and a half percent. But our hit was a little greater, cause our relative percentage of that levy went up just a little bit. Um. You know, the other thing I would point out with their budget is their budget. The the towns only pay about a third of their budget, and about two-thirds either come from the state. Or as fundraising or grant funds. So I don't think we could replace them as our youth services agency and do it cheaper uh. Than what they do. So that's my personal take on it, but I will cast a vote however you all would like me to do. Uh, and I don't know whether you wanna make a decision on that sooner or later. But that that's certainly up to you. Um, as far as the or the salary. I would suggest that you add back the first selectman's salary to this. Um, you know, we've taken it out the last couple of years, cause Mr. McGuire hasn't wanted a salary. But since we don't know who's going to be the incoming. First selectman, I think it's appropriate to have a, you know, some salary line item in there. But again, that's your, that's your call, that's just my suggestion. And I can either remove it or leave it in there at your pleasure. Any takers?
Put it back in there, but let's lower the salary.
Yeah, I think I think that's probably best bet.
Okay, so it was four thousand. What would you like?
Was it really? No wonder he ran for this.
I need the money.
I know, you got you got taxes to pay on that house, um.
I do.
What what's the what's the what's the salary for the for the other select board members?
Uh, twelve hundred.
So why don't we make that one two thousand? Or twenty-five hundred?
Well, okay. We get twelve hundred.
I I don't have a problem with that, but you know. I don't care with the other, but I I think I don't believe that it's. You know, two and a half.
If I win next time, I'm taking the twelve hundred.
Okay, well, then it definitely needs to go reduced, so.
Twelve hundred. Just make it even.
Yeah, yeah, make it with everybody, I mean, I mean. Jeff does a lot of work, I'm not, I'm not discarding that, but I think as a whole. The most effective boards in this town have been boards that where everybody chips in, and I feel like our board kind of does that. I mean, everybody takes something, whether it's Scott or Jeff or Paul or myself, so, you know.
Just make it equal.
Yeah, and you you can, that's certainly one option, is to set them all to the same. Um, you know, I'm I'm. I don't have any dog in the hunt, you know, you you tell me what you wanna do. Um, if we.
Anybody else wanna vote with Adrian and I to make it equal?
Yeah, we, I'll vote.
Okay, that's three people. Forty-eight hundred. Or whatever that difference is.
Okay.
Six thousand, I can't even do math, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I will adjust that to six thousand. Okay, gonna do it in the other form and reference it back, but that's okay. Uh, Board of Finance, you know, the clerk wages, I'm not really planning on increasing the wages. For the board clerks this year, I think they're they're reasonably well paid. Um, and I asked all the boards for roughly how many meetings they thought they were gonna hold in the average length meetings. And that really hasn't changed from this year to last year, so no difference there. Um, Conservation Commission, they wanted us to add extra money in conferences. Uh, and listed off a whole bunch of conferences they'd like to take that would be next year, so. That's in their their budget.
Uh, and how much, how much is that?
Uh, five hundred and twenty-five dollars for the year.
How many conferences are they trying to go to?
I don't know off the top of my head. Um, I can probably look back up at the supporting documentation that they supplied and try to figure that out if you'd like.
I mean, if we're going to two conferences, I sort of get it, but if we're going on more than that, then, you know, maybe.
Well, remember you got five or six people. Five people on the. So. You can run up. Pretty quickly.
I know, I was just asking, cause you know, I don't know how much these conferences cost. In general, so.
Yep. Not a question I can answer off the top of my head. Um, Board of Assessment Appeals. You know, that's one I honestly don't think you should be, there should be a Board of Assessment Appeals salary. Um. You know, I honestly, I think there's a lot of other boards. That have a hell of a lot more work to do than the Board of Assessment Appeals. And an annual basis and none of them are compensated. So I I think in order of fairness. I would set that to, I would zero that out. But because that's an elected official. Uh, officials, that's a Board of Finance decision anyway. Um.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I don't know that you can zero that out because it's an elected official. And it had a salary attached to it, there may be, you might wanna check with Carol, I thought there's a state statue on that, cause we, I felt we looked at it once before.
I. Yeah, I mean, I checked with Carol in a couple of weeks. Um. But I don't know of anything that prevents us, it's an elected position. Um.
Yeah, is she on vacation, is that is that what you're saying?
Yeah, she's in the way.
Okay.
Uh, zoning Board of Appeals is even zoning agent was. You know, pretty much, everything was removed and put into the building department. Uh, Cheryl still has to move the social net um into the building park. Um, we just decided it was better to have the zoning agent. Everything listed under the building and land use department as opposed to a standalone. It just makes it easier to see, I think. Uh, E D C asked for you to double their budget. Um, I think they also sent you a separate request. Asking that you fund their uh welcome to Andover signs also. Um, I don't think I've seen that yet, or if I have, it's buried. Um, but that is not.
They didn't.
In the budget.
They did, they they did send it over.
Okay, so if you choose to roll that into the budget, we can add it right here under economic development. Um, the dues to the taller talent chamber of commerce are like four hundred and thirty dollars a year. Which gives them about seventy dollars of other things to do, so they had asked that. That be increased to a thousand dollars a year. Um. You know. Uh. Um, in terms of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you are going to, remember we put the planner under the uh. Um. Under the budget for the building and land use. Um, so if you are going to do that, you can safely reduce the legal professional line item. For the Planning and Zoning Commission. You could probably take it back down to six thousand, cause that then. You know. Uh, you're essentially just covering the cost of. The legal advice, you know, which is basically Mark Branson's services. And maybe occasionally discussions with the town engineer. Um, so that would be my suggestion, but um, that's predicated on us hiring a town plan. So, uh, I don't know whether you wanna address that now or later. Um, and Jim felt the the costs for mapping needed to go up considerably. Uh, which is still only a couple hundred extra dollars a year. Um, inland wetlands commission, not really much change there at all. They're basically asking for the same thing they asked for less last year. Um, their biggest line item is for the board clerk. Um, the only thing I would note is that they only have two hundred and fifty dollars in their training budget. There is something before the legislature right now, which looks like. It may be considered favorably, which would do the same thing with the wetlands commissions. That has been done with the zoning commissions. Which is require a mandatory number of training hours for look for everybody in the commission. So there's a possibility something will get changed legislatively that will affect that, um but, you know. It's hard to account for something that may or may not become law. Now, the story and stays the same. Um, we don't really have any capital. Uh, expenditures, so the the town, the lease that was the old loader, so that is no longer. Uh. You know, no longer on there because we're accounting for the lease for the plow truck. Just straight out of the Public Works Equipment Fund. Um, the uh revale number seems like it works pretty well. The P O C D number, what we're talking about is. Um, we're talking with the contractor that the. The zoning commission prefers to hire to do the P O C D. Whether they would take on and agree to be both a contract planner. And do the P O C D as part of the planning services. So I don't know how that's gonna go, we're gonna have that meeting tomorrow with the contractor, myself and Jet. So hopefully we'll, you know, all know more by the next meeting, how that's going to relate. Um, if we don't uh do that. And we keep in what we're doing for the uh P O C D. You know, we're gonna have to to get that contractor to lower their prices, because we don't have enough money budgeted for that. Um, we might need to increase for this year, the amount put into the P O C D uh capital fund. Um, by another five thousand dollars, but I don't wanna put it in. Until we know more, so we're just not there. until we know more, so we're just not there. Um, but we might be by the next meeting. Um, and the last thing I did was I put in, you've seen all these before for the transfers, other than I increased the building maintenance fund specifically to put aside thirty thousand dollars for the renovations in the Andover Museum. Um, and that is basically the whole budget in a nutshell. That's your thirty-second tour of the budget.
Hey Scott, good to see you. He can't talk, but he can, we can see him. All right. Well, so the items that you highlighted in yellow are things that we should circle back to at our next meeting and give you an answer on. Okay, does anyone, does anyone have any issues with anything Eric reviewed so far?
Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
I see that you put in renovations to the Andover Museum, but you can't put in money for a temporary, uh, worker down at the ball field.
Well, you gotta put the thirty thousand dollars into the.
I know, I know, I'm, I know, I know.
We didn't, uh, Scott, we did not say we weren't going to sit there and fund the temporary worker, we were waiting for you.
Uh, I, I, and I heard what you said, Jeff, and I, and you're right on target with that. I, I believe all you need is somebody that wants to be responsible to check the irrigation in both facilities in the morning to make sure that everything is working and to disconnect it and connect it in the, dis- disconnect it in the fall and to connect it in the spring. And, and I can train someone and with the, in the DPW staff to do those things. But we need to talk about it as a group.
Okay, um, let's do that at our next meeting, so Eric, at our next meeting, are we, well, was there anyone else that wanted to add anything to any of the issues that have been addressed today?
All I'm, I'm, I'm just suggesting, or thinking, we need to, in order to move this forward, we need to kind of set some, I don't know, priorities or something, what we want to vote on next meeting, because we're just going to keep looking at the same info again and again, unless somebody disagrees. So should we set some tasks or things that we want to do for the next meeting? I know we, we're still waiting on public works info and some other things to fill in the blanks, but what's our goal at the next meeting?
Well, there was nothing that Eric reviewed today that I wouldn't vote on and say yes. He has three items, I believe, were highlighted in yellow that need to be addressed for the next meetings, maybe four, if I counted them correctly. Um, but that's what I'm asking, does anyone have a problem with the way that Eric has laid out these segments, and I know we got to go over the Public Works with Jay when he's available, and that's the significant. I mean, there wasn't anything that really increased that significantly.
No, I, I mean, the only real decisions that I see is you still got to make a decision on what you want to do with employees. Um, I can resend you those two spreadsheets if you would like. Um, if you know what I'm talking about.
You may as well send them to us.
Okay, I'm happy to resend those. Um, other than that, the, one of the spreadsheets basically lists, you know, what the implications are for a two percent, three percent to four percent increase. Um, you know, or you can come back to me and tell me you want to look at a different number and, and I'll put that back in front of you. Um, you know, the, the largest increase was what Carol asked for, but she is an elected official, so ultimately, that's a Board of Finance decision, although you as a board can certainly weigh in on that. Um, uh,
Yeah, so Paul, from, from your request, I would think that, um, Eric, also send this spreadsheet along with the, the other ones?
Yeah, with the highlighted info, that'd be, I think, sorry, you're a little bit of handholding. I know this is handholding, but I think this is going to be helpful.
No, I, I mean, my job is to get you the information you want to make decisions, so you just got to tell me what that is you want, and I got to supply it, so not a problem.
And then at the next meeting, if anybody has any significant personal priorities, we should discuss them and sit there and see if we can add them, or if there's issues that people want to reduce something, we should reduce something. Um, I mean, there's nothing that Eric went over today that I wouldn't vote on and say, fine. I mean, what's your total increase? Well, when you send us the spreadsheet, we'll figure out your total increase. Um,
Yeah, okay.
And then Eric, for next week's meeting, so we're meeting a week from today, does that give you Jay time to go over what you need for that part of the budget?
I hope so, I mean, I'm, I'm out of commission tomorrow, because I, the tomorrow is my grant deadline, but after that, like Thursday, Friday, I'm okay, so as long as I'm not thinking this is going to be a crazy bad storm. So I don't see any reason why the two of us can't sit down and, you know, and spend a couple days working on that prior to the next meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah, and then what, you might have said it, but I've been kind of talking with Scott here and there, so did you mention that you had a date that you confirmed for that, um, I keep forgetting his name, that was going to come talk to us to give us a little insight on the town planner?
Yeah, I did confirm a date, unfortunately, it's not what I wanted, but, um, you know, we can get him on the thirteenth, which was the date you were going to adopt the budget and send it to the Board of Finance. I'm sorry I couldn't get him before then, but he's just got a lot of commitments, so.
We could just leave that for the last line item, I guess.
Uh, we, we can, I think we can start obviously thinking and talking about things, but leave that for that last, um, last item like Jeff was saying.
And then your other three things, I don't think, I don't see any reason why we can't discuss those and approve those at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, other than sending you the spreadsheet, the employee salary or employee compensation spreadsheets, uh, and sending you a new copy of this draft budget sheet, um, what is it, what are my deliverables, and, you know, hopefully putting together a better uh, number for what we would need to put into the road improvement fund with Jay. What are my deliverables for the next meeting?
Hmm, I mean, that was it, because you don't have anything. Well, the vehicle, I mean, even though we're putting thirty-five thousand dollars in it, the vehicle, so I know Jeff Murray has had some, has done some research on different items, and to be really honest, I was listening to your conversation, the, I like the van idea, Jeff. Um. Yeah, that might be, that we could do it, uh, the problem is that we're not going to get that on the timeline we're looking at. Um, the other thing is, we could just look at it for a future purchase, that's what I kind of like, the hybrid technology instead of just using a pure gas minivan um, down the road. Well, why, um, why couldn't we get it on the timeline? What is the issue with that? Well, I just think it's going to have to, it's going to be, it's going to have to be adapted. I mean, we could probably reach out to these manufacturers and see what their build time is, but I'm sure it's going to be way beyond the, the delivery time that we're going to want for this vehicle.
And, and the real question is, do we need it?
Yeah, that's the problem, it'd be nice, it's a nice to have, but is it, is it, it's, it's, it's a nice want, but it might not be a need.
Right, because I mean, the reality is, it is very rare, right now, we have three vehicles that can all transport somebody who's handicapped. And the majority of time, we're not transporting people who are handicapped. So I mean, that's not, you know, it's great to have those, but we don't need another one. Um, you know.
And then when the time comes around, if we want to, if we want to pursue an electric vehicle in the future, there's, there's probably a dozen models on the horizon, they're going to be out in the next two or three years that it would be more suited for what we'd use it for, so. You know, I think we just need to kind of get over the hurdle with this, is like, if, if we went with the hybrid, it would be kind of a, and it'd be an integral step to where we would need to go eventually.
For the record, Jeff, I still don't agree with you on that, I still think a bolt would be a perfect vehicle.
Well, all right, so Eric, just to address that situation, I, I talked to, I actually talked to two owners that own bolts today. And I talked to another owner that owns a Kia Nero Hybrid. And we call, came to the conclusion that the bolt would be extremely too small, that's, uh, Bob Hamburger was completely right about that. The legroom, it'd be hard, it'd be hard for a senior to get in and out of it, it's just not, it's just not sized appropriately. For what we, I, I'm not, I, I'm not disagreeing with you on the electric, but it's just, there's nothing right now sized in the, in the, in the price point that we, that we're looking at right now. And that's the problem, and, and, and the thing is, I, I did a lot of research and it seems like the Toyota just came to the top, the, the R four just came to the top every time, so. Just on size, uh, use, um, features and reliability and, and, um, residual value. So I mean, it's just, I, I took all that stuff into consideration, that's what I came up with.
Yeah, and, right, I, I mean, I, I don't, ultimately, the five of you are the deciders, I, I mean, I, I don't agree with you, but I certainly respect your right to make that decision, whatever you decide, I live with.
I mean, I, I talked, one person has a, has a relative, you know, her mo- his mother is elderly, and she has an issue getting in and out of the vehicle, and so he said, yeah, if you're going to have people that are limited mobility, getting in and out of the front seat, it's going to be an issue. And he, he admitted, he said, it's not, it's not going to be the best vehicle for senior transportation.
Bolt or Bolt E and V?
Both.
Okay.
So that's, it's, that's from owners, people that own them personally. Um, the, the drain issue for parked is not such a big issue, the only issue is these owners, when it gets cold, especially, you know, below twenty degrees, they've noticed that their battery efficiency goes down thirty, forty percent, especially when it's not in a heated garage. And so where, where are we going to be storing this? In a non-heated garage. So, the battery technology, I was, I did a lot of reading on it. In the future, they're going to start doing more, um, uh, heating of the batteries while they charge to keep the efficiency up when they're being used. Because once that batteries is up and running, they, uh, some of the motor cooling goes back into the battery in the cell, and it keeps the battery warm, so the efficiency goes a lot higher. So the technology is still kind of young with that, so the next two or three years, we'll probably see a big, uh, ramp up in technology as far as efficiency on the batteries. Okay, so, let's, um, Apollo, what we'll do before the next meeting is, I'll take, uh, I'll take Eric's information and we'll put a little list together of things that we have to vote on. And we can vote on them at our next meeting and have an agenda for voting, I mean, there's ninety percent of this budget that I would just honestly pass today. Move forward today, unless
Well.
the other members of the selectmen have issues.
Yeah, we want to.
I'm going to, I just want to throw one thing out there. I mean, it's, I was looking at the calendar today, uh, on the town website, and, um, I mean, I see disc golf listed, I don't see, I don't see pickleball listed, I don't see, I don't see the volleyball listed, I don't see a lot of other things listed on our website. Is it, is it time that we probably consider putting some money aside for a part-time recreation coordinator? I would love to support that.
So would I, Jeff Murray.
I thought you were the part, I thought, I thought Scott Person was the part-time recreation commissioner.
I don't know if you saw the pictures, but Paula and Jeff and Scott are.
Well, you know, I, I, I have an issue with this whole thing because Paula makes a big deal that people don't show up, but then she discards people from going by saying they don't have enough racket, so. Just saying.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just saying, there's a lot of opportunities out there, and maybe we get somebody on a part-time basis. It could be somebody that's pre- that's presently employed with the town that wants to take.
Well, Paul goes to every event, why doesn't Paul just do it?
Because I, yeah, because I was, you know, why not?
I don't know if you've seen Paul at our last readings, her office is.
This golf, pickleball, you know.
Well, I just think this is going to roll in with the end of the commu- with the building of the community center, we're probably going to, you know, it's, it's going to be a kind of a transition period to get that into the community center as well, if that's going to be part of the senior services, I don't know, but we're going to have to have somebody, we're going to, we're going to have people that are going to want to do events and one of the yoga and all kinds of things in the, in the room. We're going to need somebody that's going to, that's going to work to schedule that stuff and make sure that it's going to be, uh, you know, the room, the rooms left in a good condition, et cetera, et cetera.
So what are, what are you suggesting then, Jeff?
I don't know, I would just throw it out there, maybe just somebody like one day a week to, to make sure that the website's up to date. Um, process some of the applications for these, for the, uh, classes. Because I'm, I'm, you know, I can see all kinds of things happening at the community center, like cooking classes, guitar lessons, you know, yoga, you name it. And we're going to have to have somebody to, we're going to, we're going to need somebody to kind of coordinate all that stuff and, and, and register people and sign people up and make sure that the rooms are available at those times they want to have those events or classes.
Right.
Well, just look at the, uh, I mean, the one thing that stuck out to me, and we didn't really go after it because we didn't talk about it, because Eric had it as Carol reviewed, but the rec commission, which Carol is involved in, has six thousand dollars for, uh, go up, Eric, on your spreadsheet.
Sure.
So, I, I would sit there, I would sit there, Jeff Murray, I would support fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for that position, because I do think it's important. I think we as a town, um, you know, once we gave, one, one second, Adrian, once we gave up our, our athletics in town, I do think it, it's, it's stopped bringing parents and new parents, new residents in town together to, to meet each other and to, to, you know, become community oriented, and I really do think all those events like you're doing, I think pickleball is a great idea, I think it's a great Friday night event, I think volleyball is a good thing to do, you know, basketball for, you know, the kids is a great thing to do, I, I think it would be, I think it would be beneficial to the community to sit there and have a rec coordinator, an event coordinator that would assist the seniors, the kids, the sports. I think, I think it would be very positive.
Right, and, and I mean, I didn't overwrite what, because that is what the rec mission voted on for their budget. But I mean, their budget on programs is tight enough that, I mean, I bought all the pickleball nets, you know, and just donated to the program because they didn't have any money for that. You know, so it's, it's not a, you know, it is a tight budget, I, I don't disagree with that.
I don't think, I don't think it's enough money, but again, it goes to what Jeff Murray was saying, what are the programs? Yeah, because the only reason I knew about pickleball is that there was white tape down on the, the AES gym floor, and I asked somebody, what's this tape for, and they said, oh, pickleball, and I said, you know what, I didn't even know pickleball was going on. And I'm, you know, and, and we're pretty tied in, we're pretty tied into what's going on as selectmen, but the average person, citizen in town is, is never going to find out about this stuff unless we somehow either through the River East or through a coordinator, and, I mean, AES is great, they send things home. But, um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of kids that don't go to AES, they go to private school and other schools that don't get to, to, I mean, parents, I've heard from multiple parents, they, they don't know the, like, what's going on in town, what's available, and we, we need to do a better job of getting that out there.
I agree with everything that everyone is saying, except I think this needs to be a larger conversation about what we're doing with community centers as far as staffing, because I think you may want to look at something with a larger, a larger situation, you know, it, it, that person could also be the person that helps with the, that, that ends up doing, you know, I mean, Kathy Plausi said very clearly, she's not doing this forever, so we need to start thinking about what someone, you know, someone that can be taking over that scheduling for, for rides and a lot of the things that are kind of falling on, on volunteer shoulders right now, we could tuck into a position that, that basically, or, you know, manages the community center and manages these events, you know?
Yeah, well, then start it, then start it. Start it with a small program and then for next year, because we won't have a community center built until.
Or next year, because we won't have a community center built until. At least halfway through the year, if it got, if it. If it's built, so. I I mean, listen, I I I will absolutely support this, that issue because I.
Really, yeah, we either merge this position in with the senior services or we or we, you know. I I just think for the time being, we 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 really need to get a handle on the. The the programs that we have in town. And get them out there on the website and and get it because it it should be on a calendar that there should be volleyball at the AES gym.
And offer more.
Well, so ask this. Has anybody in the rec commission or anybody that's part of the? The pickleball program? Gone to my admin assistant and said, hey, you need to put these events on the calendar?
Probably not because it's volunteer, but if there was somebody paid doing it, rounding up all these activities and making sure that they're on the website. And then like all the registrations for sports and things that we do. All that stuff's getting processed through that person. So they know that we're staffing teams and we're doing things. You know, we have enough kids to play in certain age groups and everything, you know, it's.
And and the person walks across the parking lot and speaks to the teachers. And asks the teachers to make sure that the kids get their. Their basketball registrations and come to Saturday morning and first, second and pre K and come to the the program. I mean. That stuff that's not getting done.
Yeah, and and to top that off, I have a, there's a family in town that their their son's going to. Not going to AES and they didn't know about basketball and they were interested in playing. So we we kind of lost somebody.
No, we're there on Saturday. They can come.
I know, but it's just.
Bring them.
Send them. They're they're older, so they would be playing a, you know, elevated.
Okay, but. But you need to, if you're gonna put a budget together, then we need to, you know, how many hours do you want to do a week, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I'd say, I'd say eight hour, eight hours, eight hours a week would be fine, I think, to start and just see where that gets us. And just budget for that. I think that'd be acceptable.
And what are you paying? What are you? What are you paying them an hour?
Fifteen dollars now. Twenty dollars now. Come on.
Could we add this? The thing is, there might be a volunteer that may want to do this, but they're just gonna get. They'll be on the record and be able to get paid for what they're doing. Because. We're we're relying way too much on volunteers to to get a lot of this stuff done. And I don't I don't I don't think it's fair to the volunteers.
Well, if you start fifteen dollars an hour.
Else's position?
What's that?
Add this to someone else's position, possibly?
Possibly, it's just, but it would be another, it would be a standalone position. So like if somebody, if somebody was a current employee. And they're maybe part-time and they wanted to take this on as an additional role, they could.
What about what about Eric's admin?
You're gonna push her over into, you're gonna. Now, you, if you do Eric's admin, Scott, you were gonna run into the same problem we ran into in the past that we got sued over, so.
Oh.
Too many hours.
If you take an employee that's the. Part-time with benefits employees. Which would be Lauren. You know, and the. The building department admin. Eight hours a week, you couldn't do Lauren because that would push her into a full-time. Uh, status, and I'm not sure. You necessarily want to do that. Um, yeah, you'd run into that problem no matter what you do. So there are.
Well, you don't want.
How about someone from the PTA or cool?
Yeah, so I'm thinking.
I was gonna say, you you, yeah, you don't want to drop this on an employee. I mean, you want somebody that wants to do this, that's excited about doing this, so.
Well, we we have suggested in the past what what Jeff McGuire is suggesting now.
Well, look, if you do sixteen bucks an hour, eight hours a week, you're at, you know. Sixty-six hundred a year. So if you put seven thousand in. If you're gonna do it, you should also give them a little bit of a marketing budget. So maybe you put ten grand in for the whole thing. You know, let them be able to send out flyers or something, postcards, something to try to get it out there, even if it's just like, you know, buying an ad in the river east every now and then or something. You know?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
But ten grand?
Yeah, I'm just, it's just such, it's just such a small segment of the budget and it and I think the. I think it would just benefit so many more people that if they knew things that were going on, we we get a lot more participation.
Right.
Yeah, do we put this under the auspices of the rec commission or where do you put it?
I think we should probably put it under their budget and that person, I think that person would probably answer to the rec commission.
Fair enough.
It would be somebody that would report to the rec commission.
It would be the, it would be the person. It would be like the uh. The rec commission administrator like Eric is for us.
Correct.
They would be, and and they should be, you you would hope that you would get somebody that would want to run it, really run it. And.
I I think we, I think we probably could get a few candidates in town and people that were interested. Because I think we, I think we have people that have that vision that they want to have some more, you know, involvement in town with with sports.
And who? And who would they work for then?
I think they report to the rec commission, like the rec commission want to do a program. That person would implement it.
Eric, they're re- reporting to Eric though, right?
Well, they would, they would report. They would work for Eric. Eric has to be in charge of all employees.
Exactly, yeah.
From employee standpoint, but from a directional standpoint, because. They would, they would definitely take direction from the rec.
Right, exa- yeah, right. Okay, so. As long as that's.
Well, we we want to be careful with that, though, because I don't know how long the rec commission meetings are, but you could burn through some of your hours just sitting in the meeting. You don't have a lot of hours on this list.
There once a month.
Yeah, there once a month, Adrian. They're not that long. They're maybe an hour.
Yeah, they're short.
Okay. Oh, you mean like, you mean like this budget meeting was supposed to run out?
Yeah. Well, if you keep. We'd get started till eight, eight thirteen, seven thirteen. Thanks, Scott.
I'm sorry to throw it out there, but I just thought we not, we needed to discuss it for this budget. That's all.
So your goal is to basically add. Ten thousand. With the intention of getting. Hire somebody to work roughly eight hours a week. At approximately sixteen dollars an hour. Uh, for the town. To handle everything that the rec commission does now, but to essentially have more time available to actually manage the programs. And time and interact with the school. Does that accurately sum up what you're asking?
A- and would probably be involved with the community center, wanting to get up and running.
I I think that's an assumption to make because it doesn't. You don't know what this person's skill set's gonna be.
Yeah, if they're if they're fit for that position, then let's do it, but.
Right, right. But let's not make an assumption that, I mean, because really what we want when we get to the community center level, I think, is. We want someone that can that can understand or start looking for grants. You know? Um, because there are, there's a lot of programs out there, so.
Right. And Eric, what did you write down in there? You put eleven, five, there were six in there, six and ten is sixteen. Isn't it?
Well. I'm not sure what you just said.
I don't know. What are, what are you adding up, Scott?
What was it? What was the number under the rec commission before? Six thousand?
Six, six thousand.
So and what is there now?
I haven't done, put anything there now. Um, I'm. Because I'm gonna have to add an actual line item. Because. You know, you can't just put employee under programs. You're gonna have to. Add something for an actual employee there. Um, so you'll have. An indirect.
About. About what? How about what?
How about we sit there and say? This is, this is a priority that this board would like to put in a place. We're gonna put it under the rec commission. Let's figure out how to do it. We don't have to decide it all tonight. I mean, Jeff just brought it up. I definitely will support it. I know Scott will support it.
I'll support it.
So.
I mean.
All will.
Why wouldn't she? She needs more pickleball help.
Right.
You're not coming.
Adrian.
I I what I didn't, I, you want me to come?
Adrian, I'll make sure that there's a racket here for you if you tell me.
I want you to use your Amazon gifts, your Amazon gifts, get pickleball rackets.
Yeah.
And we'll, and we'll test them. We'll test them.
Just ma- keep making excuses, Adrian. You're just scared because I'll beat you.
Paula will beat you.
I I have to tell you guys, though, I I really, I, you know, I.
It's the only net she can see over, so you know.
Oh, I go to the gym and I sat there and I said, who put down these white lines? Who did that? Was it Scott and and Paula? Were you two the ones that laid down the white line?
No, Grace and Dave, Gast- Gastanian.
I started to chuckle. I said, the poor kids can't figure out where the lines are on the. And I got all of these new white lines that I have to sit there.
Too funny.
They.
That is awesome.
They figured it out fine.
They don't care. They don't care. My kids don't care about out of bounds or in bounds. It's just don't hit the wall. That's all I care.
Like racquetball.
That's it. Scott brought his grandson there. We're in. I don't know why everybody doesn't bring their kids down.
Wait, are we letting kids play pickleball? I thought this was for.
No, this is basketball.
Agent.
It is. For old people.
Right.
And Eric, I played with uh, Paula's son. I'll play with him any day. He's a very good player. It was the first time you ever played. I'd play with him any day.
That because he was. He he's got awesome sports capabilities from his mom.
He does.
He's.
But that's why you don't want to play with kids because you get your butt kicked. Who wants that? Be playing against like George Knox, somebody might.
Listen, don't be.
We should sit there. We should hit, sit there and have the board and selectmen tournament. It's it's almost March.
Listen, don't be. Don't be saying anything bad about my buddy George Knox, okay?
I'm not. But I think I could take him in pickleball, pretty sure.
I don't know. He's, you know.
He's got better lateral movement than you.
He's.
That's true.
All right, we gotta, we gotta go. Do we have anybody out here? I like, let's always get organized for our next meeting. I gotta go home. My uh, my wife will be wondering where I am. Um.
I'm texting her right now that you're a pickleball.
Yeah, good for me.
No, it's.
Is there anything specific that, I mean, so let's just bring our agenda to next meeting. We'll vote on all of the items that Eric went through. If you have any items that are in the budget that you want to sit there and call out. We'll sit there and dress them at the next meeting. And then. Eric, when are you getting? Jay, when do you want to do Jay? Do you want to do it the next meeting? You want to do it the following meeting?
I am hoping we're doing it at the next meeting. Um.
Can can we just throw an agenda up for the next meeting that's got a list of all the things you want to vote on?
Sure.
I think Eric's the three things other than the planner, right? We want to vote on those. We want to vote on the.
Planner.
Town employees, salary increases. And then public works.
And then are we, are we?
Money for rec commission. Money for rec. Money for the co- money, money for the car.
And oh, yeah, Erica, is there any way we can get a solid quote for that? Vehicle, that that vehicle by next Monday?
Probably not, but. You know, it's possible. Um.
All right, then the answer is probably. So let's sit there and see if we probably can get a quote.
Can we, yeah, can we just go to the dealer, just get a budgetary? Just to make sure we're in the price range we need to be.
If you, if you call a dealer, they'll get back to you within a day.
They won't sell it.
Right. I I mean, that's, that's something. That's an estimate. That's not a, a price quote would be something through Sourcewell or something to purchase the. Purchasing policy would allow us to actually execute.
Right, but but Sourcewell would be cheaper, right? So. Than a regular dealer.
If we just get a budgetary quote directly from the dealer, just have a call from the municipality. Now, we're looking for, you know, mid-level trim. Uh, vehicle.
Why?
It's a budget. We we don't want, just. Let's sit there.
We need something with like adjustable pedals and stuff, just in case Paula wants to volunteer to drive too. Bring in her own pickleball team.
Paula.
Wow.
This is being recorded, number one.
Well, listen, Paul and I are going, I'm going to pickleball and I'm I want Paula. I'm going, Paul and I are playing.
Okay. Be prepared to be, you know, crying.
We go basic model, whatever, just see what's, if we just, we just got to get something to vote on for price.
To put in the budget. So we'll sit there and do that. Let's get a list of things that we want to vote on. Everybody contribute to the next agenda so that we we vote on what everybody has. Needs to vote on. And then we'll do the rest of the budget as a global. As a global. Get her done.
Yep.
If you run into trouble, if you need budgetary pricing, I could probably help you this week. If you, if you want, if you want me to do that on your behalf, I can do that as well.
All right. So since we scared away every member of the public. And they didn't, they want to participate in our 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 banter, then. Well, we can make an a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Adrian, seconded that, so those in favor. I.
I.
We'll see.
Paula, you you.